Not yet, anyway.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission meeting for Tuesday, April thirtieth. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and if you please stand and join Mr. Jim Quinmo for our invocation.
As we think about business of the county and we think about a lot of things in this world, I'm becoming very conscious how divided this world seems to be right now in a lot of ways. Maybe even the voting going on upstairs right now might even give us a little hint of the sense of division. But we need to acknowledge who we are and begin with there. In Romans, the third chapter is a passage that says, "There is no difference between Jew and Gentile." Let me stop and comment. The Jewish world was pretty simple. It was binary. There's us and them. Jew and Gentile, two races, in other words, the whole world. There's no difference between Jew and Gentile. All have sinned and fall short of the glory of God, and all are justified freely by his grace through the redemption that came by Christ Jesus. There is really no difference in all of us, although we try to make a lot of differences, and we need to acknowledge just how much we are alike. Whatever we are, wherever we've been before, we are all from the same place. And acknowledge that. Pray with me, please. Father in heaven, thank you that you love us so much that you made us, but you made us all from you. I pray, Father, that as the commissioners meet today and consider the business of the county, that you'll guide their wisdom, that you'll guide them, that they will deal with everyone equally, that they will address equality as a merit and deal with us as who we all are. Each one of us having fallen short of your glory and each one of us in need of some kind of guidance and help that comes from you. I pray, Father, for their guidance, that your spirit will move among them, that you will direct them so that they make good and wise decisions. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen. Please join in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments. Do I have any public comment?
Could I make a comment, please?
Yes, sir.
Some years ago, I fell into a conversation with Mike Slattery about why he became involved with the commission thirty years ago, so that was renaming all the roads in the county, because there had been an EMS problem of trying to find somebody to Shannon Township that was having a heart attack, and there was a man of the same name, I think at Benton Township, who'd been looking that day in Caprioma Township, but anyway, they went to the wrong place, and by the time they got to Shannon Township, the man had died. And because he didn't have good addresses. Well, I'm here to ask for help with the address system. Apple Maps, Apple Maps have decided that two seventy-four road from the intersection of Jewel and two seventy-four, the corner where Junior Barber Crumode used to live, all the way along two seventy-four road to the intersection with US fifty-nine is K nine highway. The Grapple Road is listed on Apple Maps as a K nine highway. My house address is somewhat confused. The county appraiser's office has one address for me. County Road and Bridge have a different address for me. Apple and Google have a third address for me. The only one that's used the same one as US Postal System has used the same one as the county appraiser. Nine-one-one never used to have a problem finding my mother because Tim Callahan was leading the crew, and he knew where the Crumodes were. He didn't worry about GPS. Tim's not leading the crew, so there's a problem. Home Health cannot find us. When they put my address, one-one-nine-four-six, State Highway nine, into their maps, they end up over on two seventy-four road, either at Stan Dribbles, who has the same house number as me. And from what I understand, the logic of our system, that doesn't work out logically, but that's another discussion. I think right now they end up over at Morton's on the property that's owned by the Julian Tony Trust. And in fact, if I sit at home and I have an iPhone, if I sit at home and I say, want to go home, it says, "I'm in my house." It says, "You are four minutes from home by the nearest road." And it maps me right over to the place that's Tony's, because that's what they think is the way it works. My Apple profile has the correct address according to the county appraiser and US Postal System, but Apple thinks it's someplace else. This came to a head last week, a week ago, Sunday with my family from Florida, trying to drive from Overland Park up to the farm, and they ended up over at the Tonys because they were using Apple as a mapping system. I've researched this, and Apple says you have to have a Macintosh computer to go into the Apple system and to request a change. I don't have a Macintosh. You can't do it on an Apple phone. You can't do it on an Apple tablet, but they will give you the wrong locations. Right? So I'm asking that the county get on one of their Macintosh computers and fix Apple.
You know.
And if you don't have a Macintosh computer, then you're gonna have to borrow a bag or otherwise appropriated one from somebody.
The same thing at my house. If it's Google or Apple, you end up either at my house on Google, or you end up about five houses down on the other one app. So this is a pretty universal problem right now.
Yeah, it is.
And I know Roger Denton does a lot of mapping, and he does, he's very proficient Macintosh and all that, so he's out of town right now, but you might ask if he could help you fix it.
If he has a Mac?
Yeah, well, he had a Mac at his house. I don't, if he knows, he'll have a Mac. He's good on Macs.
Okay.
He knows the address.
And there's there's a whole bunch of logical issues that I wish the county had addressed in nineteen ninety, but.
Yeah, if you ask the pizza delivery guys, they'll tell you. It's over town. It's even in town here. There's the conflict with the mapping of Apple versus Google.
See, Google and Apple think the name of White Road is Jewel Road, which is logical because it's on the line of Jewel Road. I mean, Atchison County, Atchison Elementary School, what's it addressed on? Kansas Highway seven? Or North Seventeenth Street?
Right.
North Seventeenth Street? Because an urban system always has a local name. The highway names are just overlays inside of cities. In the county, we've adopted an urban naming plan and failed to follow the logic of the urban system. And it creates a whole system of problems. So maybe at some point in time, we ought to look at that whole system.
Thank you so much. Okay, any other public comment? Okay.
Public comment?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I have a matter with the Assistant County Clerk. I don't know if you want her present. I'm not worried that she hear what I have to say, but I leave that up to you three coaches. It's concerning putting a stamp on a letter that was all uncalled for for Mr. Goldrich in all the township. I think she should be terminated. And I know you can't, Michelle should have did it, but she didn't do it. She met Apple time. And I know I talked to Commissioner Noel, and he said it's never been done, and I said, yes, it has. And I thought, and I thought, and I thought. Courtney Calhoun was let go by the county commissioner Glenn, the position of county courthouse project manager, and Chris Channel was there. She was incompetent, and he hired her because she was a pretty young girl. He ran his hand across the back of the chair and touched her back. So then we said, boy, we better wait a while because then she'll sue sexual reference. So we waited like another two, three months, and we fired her. So county commissioners can fire an Atchison County worker that's not a worker.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, approval of minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from April twenty-third of twenty twenty-fourth?
Moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Rebus?
Went down to the Kansas County Highway media group, just called the Big Highway Officials. Highway Official. That was really, really good information and made some good connections down there that'll probably help us. And then we went and did it onsite, got a chance to watch him do the reconstruct the road with base one, and it's been about two hours, been South St. Joe watching that on the way home, so. And it can't have an all-day road and highway day. It was very, very informative and so, but let's see, good things come out of that.
Mr. Noel?
I was invited and my fellow commissioners too to participate yesterday by the Office of Jerry Moran. We also, we met at Benedictine College for announcements of some grants that were very substantial for the city of Atchison and for Benedictine. I want to applaud them. It's nice to see these things come into fruition. It was a nice event, and I'm glad that they invited us all, and it's a job well done.
Okay, anything else? I would agree that the announcement at Benedictine yesterday was incredible. So much hard work and support from Senator Moran is very, very much appreciated here in Atchison County for all the good things happening. I also want to point out that although I totally spaced wearing blue today, that today is Autism Awareness Day. We celebrate autism awareness the month of April, and so just wanting to point out the support and thank you for remembering, and thank you to HR for sending that out. I apologize for missing that today. So just because I don't have blue on, I definitely support the awareness and everything that goes into supporting those with autism. And then just, just really want to say thank you to all my constituents. Past few weeks, I've gotten a ton of feedback on a ton of different issues, and I couldn't do this job without without the public. That's what I'm here for, is to represent my constituents and listen and and guide the county in a positive way, and I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for reaching out with everything. So. All right, new business. We have Brian Oswald, Facility and Maintenance Director, purchase order approval for basement plumbing.
I don't know if you got any questions on that or anything.
I'm sorry, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, we can't talk personnel in public session. I mean, that's, we're handcuffed by that.
Yes, sir. We, yes, we hear. Hear you, appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, so I have a purchase order for IHP Industrial Incorporated for maintenance to four twelve thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, and this is to run the water.
Upgrade, fix it, get it out of that room, so.
So right.
However you want, let's have it upgrade and everything.
So Brian pointed out to the commissioners a couple of weeks ago that our main water lines are running in a room just down the hall over all of our main electrical panels. And so it was a pretty big concern to Brian, as well as the commissioners after he pointed it out. So he went out for bid to solicit estimates to get those out of there, so we don't have to worry about damage in the future. And so he's presenting us with this purchase order to IHP Industrial for twelve thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Do I have a motion to?
To be paid out of ARPA or maintenance?
ARPA, right. Are we doing that out of ARPA?
Yeah. Yeah. So I'll just write. Yeah. Yep. So do I have a motion to approve?
So, second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I kept thinking about that. When they move that, are they going to design in a couple of junctions in there where you can tie a line in easily?
Two extras, yeah.
Okay.
If you'd like to.
Assume as much, but yeah.
Two extra lines, so yeah.
So good, good. It's like, it's a couple of trails in there.
Uh huh. Just future expansion or something, you know, maybe you need to tie something in to do something, so.
Exactly. So it's gonna be something. Just want to verify that. I thought so.
A new spigot too for upfront, so that I can use it, so that's included in that too.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Thanks, Brian.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a non-elected personnel executive session, thirty minutes, HR, IT, Finance and Commission. Sorry, HR, IT, Finance and Commission.
Sitting on elected?
Yes, please.
I'll move the board of county commissioners recessed into executive session at ten sixteen AM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-one, and that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee, and that the board come out of executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement, and those present will be three commissioners, HR, IT, and finance.
Sure. Is this the one which should include the county councilors?
No, that's attorney.
That's another one.
That's attorney client.
Okay.
Okay, just make sure. Yeah, this is person of non-elected, I say.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero.
On that stuff too, that reciter.
Okay, we're back in open session. The next item on our agenda was a change order approval for the generator project, so we have that change order from a historic meeting, so we do not need to cover that. Joe Snyder has two right-of-way permit applications, so I have the first one, utility owner One Gas Incorporated for the address of eight twelve Main Street. Company crew will be renewing the service lines to seven zero-two-six and seven zero-six-eight Logeman Road in Atchison. Do I have a motion to approve? This is, yeah, from Bradley at One Gas.
Sorry.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Then I have one other Atchison County right-of-way permit application looking for approval to Kansas Gas Service issued by Bradley. A company crew will be renewing the service line at one-three-two-one-seven-two-hundred-and-ninety-fourth Road in Lancaster. Do I have a motion to approve?
Sure. Sorry.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. All right, so now we have a non-elected executive session with thirty minutes with HR and Commission.
We'll move the board of county commissioners recessed into executive session at ten forty-nine AM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-one, and that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee, and that the board come out of executive session. Oh, I missed part of it.
In twenty-five minutes, please.
You say twenty-five?
Yes.
In twenty-five minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement, and those present will be the three commissioners and HR. Say.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. All right, all through the time to keep us on. Okay, we are back in open session, and we have an executive session, non-elected personnel, thirty minutes with the commissioners, HR, and the county clerk.
So moved.
He's gonna read it.
I'll move that the board of county commissioners recessed into executive session at eleven sixteen AM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B, four-three-one-nine-B-one, and that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee, and that the board come out of executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room of the courthouse, and those present will be the three commissioners, HR, and the county clerk.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, we are back in open session, and we need an executive session, non-elected personnel, HR, Commission, County Clerk, and Deputy Elections Officer.
We'll move the board of county commissioners recessed into executive session at eleven forty-seven AM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-one, and that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee, and the board come out of executive session at, how long did we say?
Five minutes.
Five minutes? In the commission room, courthouse basement, and those present will be three commissioners, HR, clerk, and deputy clerk.
Same.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Are you guys going into recess? Budget workshop, yep. So we are back in open session, and next on the agenda, we have four actual budget workshops, so we will recess into budget workshop.
Before that, I have something that I wanted to say, and that might be appropriate to do it now. And I want to make a motion to exclude this, the use of this room for any township or non-county entity to use. I think it's been disrespected. I think that it was a temporary situation when they were started to use this, and I don't think it's appropriate for them to continue. We're not a venue for that sort of thing. We use this for the county uses, and that's my feelings, and I wanted to make a motion to have them barred. Just in general, for anybody to use it. Yeah, for all, because we, this, if they're here after hours, we're gonna have to have staff here to let them in, let them out, security things, who's here, who's not? And when there's business going on and they have it during the day, then it becomes another security thing. We've got people in the building. We've got fights carrying on, and I think it's to the point where it's never been done. They hadn't had township meetings before, and I think they can find a venue on their own. They are not our responsibility for that. They've made that clear, and I think that it's inappropriate for the relationship to continue. I'll make a motion to ban all non-county entities from using this as a venue. Okay, I'll second that.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? So I would like to have discussion because I've I've been thinking of this topic, however, not prepared to have the discussion today, but at the KCCA, I had asked around of what other counties are doing, and as a tax-paying entity, other counties are allowing use. I know we have an unfortunate situation and more of a negative, right, has driven this to have this discussion. But in other counties, they allow access of the courthouse or the meeting room because it is a a tax-paying building, but there's a process, right? So there's maybe an application signup form or a calendar, or what do you need? And a rental fee that could be associated with it, depending if I feel like I need security, if I need to have maintenance or a restroom available, all of the things. So rather than just be opposed to it, I would just say I would love to have further discussion and maybe determine a process for it. So.
Well, I agree with both of you. So I'm supportive of Eric's motion, and we'll vote for it for now. I think the next step is what you're saying is we, right now, we're putting the hammer down for done. The next step is, let's.
If we consider it, it'll be under these circumstances.
Let's set some policies up and let's have a guideline what ours can be used, things like that, and that there's a fee. So I think all those things should be addressed. Because it could be, I mean, anything could happen. Any township could have their main facility get destroyed or something. I mean.
Or other organizations.
Organizations, it could be many of them. So I think we need to be mindful of that, but for now, I'm with you, and then we can move forward.
Okay, so do we want to talk about what that timeline looks like to develop something, or or just it's a no, and also understanding who has authority to grant access?
That's another thing too. I think that it ought to be, once they have a meeting, then it's like they just kind of come willy-nilly or without, you know, more thought, you know, it's just like, we need to have it. We're gonna be there tonight, you know, it's like.
Yeah.
So if, if they're, if it's considered, and we have more discussion on it, I'm open to those discussions about having it, but to me, it's gotten to the point where I'm uncomfortable with just an open-ended invitation, especially with the meetings that have happened, that don't respect our property.
So this motion is temporarily due to the circumstances around Walnut Township hosting their meetings?
I would say it was permanent until we come up with a policy or a plan and then voted to happen under the auspice of a new plan or whatever's created.
I appreciate.
We should do that, maybe. Let's get six or eight weeks out or so, and then we can start having that discussion.
I'm fine with that, if we have that whole understanding, but.
Absolutely. It was time to.
I would be fine with that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the discussion very much, and with that discussion, I would support that. So it's been moved, seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero, that we will no longer have Walnut Township host their meetings here. So, and anyone else for that matter, until we have a policy in place of who and how they can, they can utilize our space.
And I would add to that, that I did just talk with Gary the other day, and he made it very clear that he felt like that they need to come in here, they need to find a place, and he had a pretty good idea where he thought they maybe, they had two ideas where he thought they could probably meet, so. So I think they're gonna work out anyway, so.
I think the thing of how, like, the process, and you said, we'll have security, check the, you know, it's quite obvious they need security there for everyone's protection, and just to have all of those things in order, because it's like to have somebody scrambling, well, we they're here, but did anybody call, you know, there's no follow-through on whether security had been contacted or not, so. And I don't think that that really ought to fall on county employees to necessarily be the watchdogs of, of, of these. Uh, be the watchdogs of, of, of these groups, kind of. I mean, we, we're gonna have to be some. Responsibility and, and uh. It's like, if the clerk authorizes it, well, then you've made arrangements for all of this. Or if the sheriff's department uses this room, that they would be kind of responsible for and.
I, I think that's good. And one last thing is just the incidents that happened on Friday um did have an effect on our staff. And so being mindful of them, I think this is, this is good until we iron out a process, so. Thanks for bringing that up, Eric. Okay, so uh I would look for a motion to um recess into budget workshops uh until finished. Emotion?
So much. Say.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
One second.
Okay, we are back in open session after our first workshop. And we have no unfinished business. Um, our county councillor is not here today, so no updates there. Um, there's no need for any additional executive sessions. Uh, I would look for a motion to approve the expenses of this week.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Um, is there any other public comment for today? Seeing none on that. So I would look for a motion that we adjourn our meeting um and conduct the next three budget workshops. Good.
I'll make a motion to. Adjourn, is that what?
Yes.
Yes.
So we're gonna conduct the next three workshops or budget workshops and then we will adjourn after that. So Michelle can take her to her class.
Yeah, so we're adjourning to workshop.
Yep. Adjourning in workshop. Do I have a motion to adjourn in workshop?
That's what I'm intending.
Sorry, yeah.
Say.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. We are adjourning at twelve thirty-five in the workshop. For IT ports in a try.